Good afternoon. I'm Commissioner Patty Adair. I live in Sisters, and I'm here today with my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Tony DeBonne from La Pine and Commissioner Phil Henderson from Bend. And we're here to discuss the plan that we just had approved last night at 9:23. We received word from the governor's office. It was a great Wednesday night, perfect way to end about 40 days of complete work on what can we do for our citizens. We're happy that our press is here today. And first of all, I'd like to introduce Commissioner DeBonne to begin our program.
Thank you. So today Governor Kate Brown and the Oregon Health Authority has approved Deschutes County's Phase One reopening application. This approval will allow for limited reopening of certain businesses with operational modifications in Deschutes County beginning tomorrow, May 15th. Restaurants and bars for sit-down service, personal service businesses including barbers and salons, gym and fitness centers, where guidelines have been published today on that since the governor's press conference, and also in-person gatherings for up to 25 people. Also, the governor specifically mentioned all retail. The process of developing a reopening application and submitting it to the state was truly a community effort. We thank our business owners for the input that was provided to our cities and chambers of commerce and to St. Charles and other healthcare providers for their partnership. Perhaps most importantly, thanks to our community for all the sacrifices you have made to get us to this point and your continued efforts in helping us flatten the curve as we move into Phase One. Back to Commissioner Adair.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne. As he has mentioned, this approval will allow for limited reopening of certain businesses beginning May 15th, tomorrow, Friday. Businesses that reopen in Phase One will need to follow state-issued sector-specific guidelines. They are very specific. These guidelines are available online at coronavirus.oregon.gov/. So it's important to know that we qualified, we were approved because of our testing capacities now. In Deschutes County, there are about seven locations where you can go and be tested. You no longer have to be over 60, have a temperature, be quite ill. You can be tested. So please know that. We also have proper contact testing available in Deschutes County. And please, if you get a call from a public health nurse, it's really important to follow up, call them back. It's part of our requirement. We have to, within 24 hours, contact 95% of the people that were given, names were given of someone who did actually test positive. So please, do your part to help our community maintain and go forward. Per state guidance, Deschutes County must remain in Phase One for at least 21 days. That means June 5th. It's a ways out there, but you know what? We're on the way up. Before we can become eligible to advance to Phase Two, if Deschutes County begins to see significant increases in COVID-19 cases, we will work closely with the Oregon Health Authority to evaluate potential next steps. And I want you to know that currently, the largest category of age-positive cases in Deschutes County is 20 to 29. Maybe it's just very unusual for our 89 positive cases, but just know, it could be you. And please, please be respectful of the community. Significant growth in COVID-19 spread could necessitate Deschutes County moving back from Phase One to a stay-home order again. And I know it's summer, and no one wants to stay home when it's summer in Deschutes County. So please, please do all your best in order to follow the guidelines. As we begin to reopen, it is important to remember that each of you has to continue to take precautions to keep our communities healthy. I'd like to now introduce Morgan Emerson with Deschutes County Public Health. She's going to share a few of her tips and our public health tips on how our community can stay safe and healthy as possible as we move into Phase...well, we want to move to Two, but we're at One right now.
Yes, thank you. So as we enter into Phase One, it's important to remember that the risk of COVID-19 to the public remains the same as before we began our stay-at-home orders. Without a vaccine or treatment for the virus, it is critical that we all continue to do our part to protect the health and safety of our community. Here are a few things that you can do to help. Stay home if you are sick. If you develop a cough, fever, or shortness of breath while in public, please return home and self-isolate immediately. Contact your healthcare provider for medical assistance and to request a COVID-19 test. To access testing, we have added information to deschutes.org/covid19. People who are at risk for severe complications, such as those over the age of 60 or who have underlying medical conditions, should stay home even if you feel well. Continue to practice physical distancing of at least six feet between you and people you don't live with. It's important to remember that even if you aren't in a high-risk category, you can still spread COVID-19 to others. We know that the virus can spread between, before individuals develop symptoms. This means that your actions could pose a threat to people in our community who are high-risk and can't stay home, like our essential workers. The best protection for those most at risk in our community is limiting community spread. COVID-19 has shown that it can impact people of any age. Use cloth, paper, or disposable face coverings, or a non-medical mask that covers your mouth and your nose when physical distancing isn't possible, like at the grocery store or pharmacy. Wearing a mask is a part of our social responsibility to help protect one another from our coughs and sneezes. Wash your hands often and for at least 20 seconds, or use a hand sanitizer when soap and water aren't available. Cover your coughs and sneezes with your elbow or tissue and avoid touching your face. If you use a tissue, immediately throw it away and wash your hands. And stay close to home, avoid overnight trips, and postpone nonessential travel. By following these tips, you can help reduce the spread of COVID-19 in Deschutes County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Adair and Morgan. COVID-19 has had a large impact on our local economy and for local business owners. I will be talking about what happens next for your business and how we're working at the county to help your business open as safely as possible. First of all, what happens next for your business? The most important thing is to find out, number one, whether your business qualifies for Phase One. There's guidance on our website for that, and you can contact our county environmental health officer, who's going to be talking a little bit later today. Second, you need to get the guidelines from the state of Oregon for your industry and look and see, once you're going to open, how you have to comply with those. The second aspect is, if you're not able to open yet, which means you're not going to be till Phase Two, which there are some businesses, we do have at the county several resources that we're working with to try to help people in your situation. The first of which we're applying for on Monday is a program for grant funding through Business Oregon, which we're applying for what will be essentially $200,000, part of that from the county but part from Business Oregon, to help businesses that are in need. That's particularly for small businesses. Second, we've already committed funds to a program through Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council for a loan program for small businesses as well that may be available to you. And third, if you are unable to get the PPP program through the federal government or the Small Business Administration, there is supposed to be good protection through the unemployment system for sole proprietors and independent contractors. So that system is working. It may be taking some time, but if you need help, we're available to help you with that. And I know our state representatives also are very connected to the unemployment system to work on that. I've lived here for 31 years, and like many of you, or all of you probably, we're very aware of the connection to tourism and our strong economy. Although we've reopened our own, or allowed lapse our prohibition against overnight rentals or short-term rentals, we are not trying to encourage travel from other parts of the area currently. But we do need to have travel and tourism, so that's going to be a coming thing, and we are very supportive of that as it can grow. Part of that, though, is that business owners need to set an example. I think it's more critical than normal with your business to be there and to be showing your employees and the people there what they need to be doing to meet the guidelines for your particular business, whether it's retail, restaurant, brewery, whatever. A second part of that, I believe, is that you need to be enforcing the social distancing requirements that we've talked about and are in all the guidelines. That seems to be the one aspect of the guidance that is most critical to preventing the spread of the disease. Businesses play a critical role in protecting our community from the spread of COVID-19. We are thrilled to be able to utilize our Environmental Health Department and staff to help support local businesses as they plan to reopen as safely as possible. Environmental Health is the organization that does inspections at restaurants and other public facilities, and you're familiar with that if you're in those businesses. But they're here really to help with that program. Emily Freeland is here now from our department, who will be helpful to all businesses, and she's going to go over some of the specific resources that Deschutes County has developed that you will be available to your business. Thank you. Emily?
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. So as Commissioner Henderson mentioned, Deschutes County Public Health Staff has worked to create resources to help businesses implement all of the requirements that the governor has laid out and reduce risk in their facilities. Public staff are here to provide technical assistance, resources, and clarifications for all local businesses, not just those that we normally regulate. The best practices documents provide helpful information on topics that, from our experience, businesses often have questions about. These topics include the responsibilities of contact tracing for the businesses and how contact tracing works, how to correctly clean and disinfect, including the use of commonly-used available chemicals such as bleach and how to dilute it correctly, hand hygiene, including wind gloves might be useful, personal protective equipment, PPE, versus the use of face masks, how businesses can help train employees to screen patrons and staff for symptoms. And last, but probably most important, how employees can ask patrons to comply with public health requests. So employees might be trained to say something like, "We're so glad to be open and happy you are here today. We want to remind you that if you're feeling sick at all today, we would ask you to come back when you are feeling better. We're asking all of our patrons to wear masks while in our store and wash your hands or use hand sanitizer before handling any of our merchandise. Please help us decrease the risk of spreading COVID-19 by maintaining distance from others not in your party. If there's anything we can help you find, please let us know, and we would be happy to help." This is really important that employees do have this language to help direct people's behavior as they're in your establishment. So you can access all of our information online at the Deschutes County website, and we are happy to answer any questions by phone or email that you have. Thank you.
And what's your number, phone number?
I don't have the number right here, but if you go to the deschutes.org/reopen, all of the contact information, including the guide, is listed there.
Deschutes.org/reopening.
Reopening, sorry.
And I know she answers emails immediately because I sent her one this morning, and I was incredibly impressed that you were so helpful. And you are the critical liaison for our community so that we can open up and people can start back to their, you know, their lives of working and, you know, our unemployment before this all happened was, I think, at 3.4%. So now we have the third highest, and a lot of those people do want to get back to work. So thank you for being part of that education.
Yeah, we're happy to educate, and we want to help, you know, any businesses that we can and help them know the correct information and how to do this safely.
And it was really nice to point out that the governor's plan for gyms did come out this morning, right after the press conference. So that'll be very helpful for several, quite a few different, you know, business people in our community that have been asking for it on a daily basis. So, you know, they don't have to wait till tomorrow. It's available today to see really what they need to do. So I do believe we can open up for questions now, Whitney?
Yes, Commissioner Adair, thank you. And thank you to the board and to Emily and Morgan. We do have a few members of the media with us in the room, and if folks in the room have questions, we can start with them. And then for those members of the media that are attending via Zoom, you can chat, use the chat function to type your question. We'll read that aloud and allow the appropriate person to respond.
Thank you. So are there any questions from the room?
Tyson Mosman, News Channel 21, KTVB. We just reviewed suggestions for retail employees to ask customers to comply with health regulations. When polite verbiage fails, what happens?
When polite verbiage fails? Wow, that I know. There's some people that are, you know, really angry if you ask them to wear a mask or, you know, it is a new world, and people do need to be respectful and think of their, you know, the people around them. I don't know. Emily, do you have any fabulous feedback?
Well, my first thought on that, I mean, this is the message to the community. We are all in this together. If somebody comes into your retail establishment, you know, hopefully, even if they don't want to wear a mask, they're understanding that we're in this situation. You know, the proprietor is going to need to be able to deal with that situation, and it may just be wiping down after somebody comes in. You know, this is the first day, the first time in generations that we've had to deal with, in 100 years, deal with this situation. So as we step into Phase One, let's all work together on this. If operator, business operator wants to call, we're available. You know, if it's an ongoing problem, you know, let's deal with it and, you know, get some clarity. There's a difference between recommendations and regulations, and we're not at the regulations phase right now. These are all recommendations to be safe in our community. So yeah, outreach, have a business operator outreach if they really need help, is what we can offer at this point. And yeah, knowledge and information is where we're at with environmental health.
I think we've seen a real difference in our community, such as shopping at markets, and the education over the past 64 days has been significant with people. Normally now when I go to the market, I see half the people have masks on, at least half, and a lot of people even have gloves on. But if you're going to wear gloves, you really need to change them almost constantly. And even the director of our health department, Dr. Conway, suggests really washing your hands a lot is just as efficient. Then you're going to use your hand sanitizer if you can't actually wash your hands with warm, you know, with water and soap.
I would just note that gloves are often misused, so that's the problem, is people are touching lots of surfaces and then still touching their face and not changing their gloves. So good hand hygiene, just washing your hands and using hand sanitizer is much more effective to protect you as well as those around you than glove use. Although gloves can be a tool, they're certainly not necessary, and they have to go in, you know, with good hand hygiene for sure.
So on your, the question, just one thing I'd add about if you're in retail, one thing the governor said today that was different is, she basically said that people should wear masks anytime they're out and in public in places like retail. So the second, after you've asked them to do it, I think then you'd say, well, actually the governor said you should do it whenever. So that's a stronger message than we've had in the past, so hopefully it'll resonate some.
So another couple of little thoughts. So someone just texted me, "Be a good customer, be a good neighbor, be responsible." So it's a philosophy. But also, wearing a mask is in case you happen to be incubating the virus, in case you are non-symptomatic, and you don't want to be sharing it and you not knowing that that's what's happening. It's not just you picking it up, but you possibly sharing it and not knowing it. So it is just the times we're in. This is a Phase One reopening. We're going to find out, you know, how it evolves throughout the summer with this wonderful, beautiful weather. We're not even going to be indoors as much. So good question, though, thank you.
Thank you.
A second question before, and this will be my last question, so I can turn to other people. You did speak a little bit about your decision regarding short-term rentals. The ban on that expires tomorrow. Can you speak to your thoughts on that and what's going to be happening with that?
Commissioner Henderson wanted to start.
So, you know, we were, it's a public policy issue. When we put the prohibition in place six weeks ago, we felt that there was a lot of residents in our, particularly in our resorts, but in rural areas generally, that were very concerned about the incoming travel and people from other areas. And we'd been insured with that, that that was a big problem by our health director, who's, we heard the statistics yesterday about people coming out of area. But those also are privately-owned places, just like hotels. The city of Bend didn't shut down either hotels or short-term rentals. And I think we felt that, at least I'll speak for myself, that there's, they have the right to rent their properties just like other businesses do. I think we are asking people to observe local guidelines in terms of social distancing, et cetera. We're trying to discourage through the rental agencies to not have multiple families or multiple groups. But it felt like we're going to have to do this. The resorts are opening up. That's a matter kind of of rights as well, that's my view.
Well, and for tourism, just, you know, stand by and promoting tourism is where we're at right now. We're easing our way into this. But also be respectful, you know? If somebody's coming into their second home, just kind of ease into it, you know, let the neighbors know in the grocery stores you go to, be respectful wearing that mask also. So please participate, but let's ease into it also.
One of the things that I've heard about is that visiting families will take their entire family into the market. Please, please be respectful when you're here visiting. If you do actually own a home and you want to come and stay at it, you know, that's your right. You pay property taxes to Deschutes County, and it just wasn't, it was unfortunate that some people believed that even though they owned the home, they couldn't come because of our short-term ban. And, you know, that's not what we were intending to do. We do have a lot of vulnerable residents in our county, and we do want to be respectful of them and hopefully with early hours for them shopping and respect from the visitors in the community. I think people just need to step up civility. I think it kind of disappeared for a while in our world, and definitely we could bring a lot of civility back in order to really make a difference. It's really hard on people. I believe that when we call it social distancing, it's really rather antisocial. I miss my hugs, and I think that it'll be nice when, at some point in time, when we can get back to actually, you know, talking to people, not being so, not being able to shake hands. You know, we've really had to change a lot of things that are pretty standard, normal behaviors for us as Oregonians, Deschutes County residents. So I just feel like we can make a difference, and will it happen? You know, we can only hope.
Thank you.
Thank you. So would you like to, did you want to ask anything, or should we go out to the? Thank you. Whitney, do you have anything? And I want to thank Whitney for actually finding someone to do signing today. I appreciate that. Whitney is our public information officer.
Yep, and we had a lot of help from risk management in making that happen, so thank you. It doesn't look like we have any questions from anyone that's logged in online, so I would offer it up to the board to make any, you know, closing remarks that you might want to make, any statements. And if any questions come in, I'll be sure to flag you.
Okay. Commissioner DeBonne?
Oh, just, I was taking in some notes here. So, you know, this was a lockdown time, you know, 40-something days that we all, you know, kind of stepped away and didn't do our normal thing. So if you haven't taken your snow tires off, it's time to do that. Fire-free is the opportunity for removing that fuel by the front of your house, you know? Fill up the pickup truck and get that to the landfill or the transfer stations. At this time, it is time to vote this week also. And this has been mentioned many times during our board meetings. Opportunity to give blood, which is important because the blood system is another way to capture samples in our community. The national census is going on, so that's very important at this point in time. Please participate. I know most people have probably already done that online, but there's going to be that outreach for the last few folks that haven't participated. Standby on tourism, that was the note that was mentioned earlier. And then also celebrate and enjoy your outdoor tourism. You know, this is central and eastern Oregon. We can do that recreation, but we've just got to stand by and promoting the tourism at this point. So those were my notes that I had just written this morning as I was thinking of the loose ends in the world.
Yes, there are a lot of loose ends. Commissioner Henderson?
So one of the things that I find so hard about this is we really, the uncertainty we have going forward and not knowing how long this will last. We don't know if the number of cases will go up sometime in the fall or in the summer, so we're having to cancel event after event. Yesterday, we confirmed with the county fair board that we're not going to have the county fair, but I feel like every time we cancel something or other organizations cancel something, it's like taking a piece out of our life. And so the only way I think a lot of people can get through this is trying to figure out new things to do with it, new experiences. One of the things I enjoy with regard to masks is you can have whatever kind of masks you want. You know, I like to think about it like in the Old West or the Cowboy West, that they didn't just, not just the bandits wore it, they wore it to keep dust out of your face when you're riding horses. Well, now we're doing it to keep the virus out of our face. So think of things, and you can create interesting masks. Why not do that? We used to have, we have interesting hats, have interesting masks. So try to find things in our lives to make this work. Specifically with businesses, I think it's just a matter of, we really are hoping we can help anybody that is working in business. All of us have had business experience. I've started several businesses. I, as soon as this happened with the closures and things, I was very concerned with the economy and the going into another recession possibilities is really a scary thought for a lot of us. But we can work through this if we just keep going forward. So I think that's really important, is make this a positive thing by trying to do new things, and we'll work together. We'll support our local businesses, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Yes, these have been incredibly challenging times, and as someone whose grandparents went through the depression and almost lost their ranch in Ukiah in the 1930s, you know, you feel it in your heart. My mother still is so aware of that depression, and I think, okay, what are we dealing with now? What are the, what are the citizens of Deschutes County that have been so severely impacted? If you guys, if you have a problem, if your unemployment hasn't been responded to, please let us know. I'm always trying to help people. I, you know, it really touches your heart because when people have never applied for help from the government, they've lived their entire life being personally responsible, and all of a sudden, everything has been pulled out from under you. So I just want you, you, Deschutes County, to know that you can call us, and we will do all we can to help. I personally, I don't know if you saw the press conference or not, but our health authority was put on the spot because of Deschutes County contact tracers. We only had six. Well, we fortunately have the most amazing public health department. We've been recognized by our state on several occasions, and I've only been here for, this is only my second year, but I know we have a fabulous health department. They work so hard. I was really proud to hear Pat Allen's response when he said, "Deschutes County really steps up. Our team knows what to do, and they take their job so seriously." So I just want to acknowledge Heather Keisner and her team and what they do. And honestly, we're hoping to hire more people in order to take the pressure off of that team, because for the longer this goes on, you know, it, people need, you need to have a real life outside of the pressure of healthcare workers right now. And I know, Emily, you're going to be under a lot of pressure, and I get Morgan's email about every night at 7:00 or so, and I always try and remember to thank her because everyone is working way beyond. Somebody asked me once, they said, "Oh, have you been home this whole time?" And I go, "Are you kidding? Have I been home? We've been working." And, you know, it's a responsibility we have for the public safety, but also the financial and economic stability of our county and for you, the workers. So just remember, stay positive. Please, please follow the guidelines. Stores, their lives depend on it. They need to reopen, and with limited reopening, it's really hard for a restaurant to make it. Apparently, they need about 85%. So you know what? If they're reopening now, you know, buy-to-go food, whatever you can do, but help our local community. They need it like never before. So thank you, and thank you for joining us today.
Couple of the notes. So Jefferson County notification was that they got approval since the governor's announcement, I guess.
Oh, great.
So I don't know that they had. So as I say, last night, Crook County and Deschutes were notified. Now Jefferson County has made the guidelines as of just recently. But also, we need to remember our fellow Oregonians in some other more populated counties. So Polk and Marion are both, have applied and are working for getting the approval completed, but then Multnomah, Washington, and Clackamas are still working towards this process even. So our most populated counties in the state are not in the same spot, so...
They were told to stay home by the governor today, in fact. They were told to stay home by the governor today, in fact, several times. So I thought that was critical. And then actually, my home county of Moro County, Hepner, was not approved, nor was Yomatella. So I'm hoping that they can join us. I believe the governor did want everyone to be able to reopen. She has to be extremely proud of the fact that we are in the right end of the tiers of COVID-positive cases and deaths, for the nation, actually. We Oregonians have to be proud of ourselves and know that there is a reason why our numbers are so good, and what we can do to continue those numbers with all the best judgment you can possibly use.
And sorry, I got ideas. So yesterday, we authorized hiring an environmental health person, and also three in the public health nurse, two nurses, and a public health educator, so four new people to be open positions. So if people are hearing this and they're looking to be involved at the county level, there's going to be some open positions to apply for.
Oh, fire-free, it does go till May 24th. This means zero to five feet, have it cleaned around your house spotlessly, and then go out as far as you want. And when you go to the transfer station or the landfill, you don't even have to take your yard waste out. We have people that'll do that for you. So that's something that we're giving back to our community. Please remember, it's through the 24th of May, and I think it's extremely significant when you consider that the Forest Service nor BLM will be doing any prescribed burns. They haven't done any, and they will not be doing any though. So you, the citizens of Deschutes County, let's have a lot of time, fun time in our yards. Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further, thank you.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.